Pursuing the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Paragraph 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Wilmington Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. Via technological means, members of the public who would like to participate in a meeting via Zoom can do so by going to this link. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 850-4609-9469, then press pound and then press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment. By following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keyboard or using the raise hand function on Zoom. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town website as soon as we are able. So we have a 7:30 continual public hearing of Conservation Subdivision Design Public Special Permit, Number 19-01 for 79 Nickel Street, Map 35 Parcel 29. So does a letter request an extension?
Yeah, there was a request to extend the public hearing to the, uh, Cheryl, was it December or January? Let me unmute her or Sierra, whoever knows.
January.
Okay.
So we go with January 5th, the first meeting?
Yes.
And you told them this was the last extension?
We would like to convey that if you'd like.
I would like to.
Yep.
Take a motion to extend the public hearing to January 5, 2021 at 7:30.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, Sean.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Angela.
Yes.
Rondi.
Yes.
Terry. Chairman votes yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I know it's sort of late for this, but if you wouldn't mind just doing a roll call of the members.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, can we have a roll call? Terry.
Present.
Sean.
Present, Mr. Chairman.
Rondi.
Present.
Angela.
Present.
I am here. What would you like to do next?
We do have a Form A and I believe, um, um, folks are here to talk about that. Kristen and Craig, are you guys waiting for Luke or are you guys gonna speak on behalf of this?
We're gonna speak. Um, yeah, Luke was unavailable, so I'll do my best. Well, the two of us will do our best. How's that? Do you want me to go on? Or? Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, um, and I can, I was gonna share screen with some plans and that kind of thing to make it easier. I assume you all have a copy of this Form A plan.
Yeah, but we need you to share.
I know you do. It's very busy. It's very busy. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Um, and again, this is.
If it's easy, it might be. Do you want Val to share her screen? It might be easier. Val, can you share your screen or?
I can. I just have to pull it up.
But we don't have, um, we have more plans. Uh, we've highlighted that that A and R plan in different ways to kind of explain it. That's, that's what I meant.
Oh, okay. You put up a plan. It takes a second. It takes a second.
Okay, well, with any.
You're lucky. You're the only one on the docket, so.
I know. All right, here we go. Um. Okay, are you all seeing this?
There you go.
All right, there you go.
Looks good.
So it is the A and R plan, but what we've done is highlighted it to try and explain this, you know, what we're doing. So these three highlighted parts of the plan are the current parcels, okay? Map 5 Parcel 3, 3A, and 1J. That's how it looks currently, okay? Um, and what we have, um, the blue, I'm sorry, the yellow is address 71 Marion Street, okay? These three parcels have been owned by three family members forever, like for a very long time, okay? So, um, 71 Marion Street's highlighted in yellow, and again, that's the existing parcel now. Um, it has 40 feet of frontage, as you can see at the, at the bottom here. Um, 73 is in blue. Both of these parcels have houses on them, um, and have for a long time. Um, that little pink piece at the bottom is just a vacant strip of land. The 71 and 73 have access, um, been accessing their homes across each other's parcels as well as across the, the little parcel. We've kind of, um, shaded the existing driveways. So one goes to B1, uh, which is 73 Marion, and the other, the longer drive goes to, um, 71 Marion. Again, this is the way it's been forever, but with no formal easement or anything. So it's just kind of family getting along. Um, what the Form A plan does, um, let me just. So the Form A, um, all right, so you have this. All right, this is what you're looking at. I'm gonna, the next plan I'm gonna show you is what the result is, okay? What, once we do what we wanna do, um, the way it's gonna look, I'm calling it after, okay? And I'll explain each, each thing as it happens. So there's a parcel F, um, on the Form A plan that gets combined with B1. So B1 will look as it does here now in blue. It will have additional frontage and legal access. So part of what we've done to, in this process, and I skipped this, I apologize, was we actually recorded an easement, a formal easement for this whole driveway, this access situation, okay? So that they, um, the two, um, house owners, if you will, 71 and 73 are giving each other legal access to, you know, um, easements, I'm sorry, to access their property. So we've kind of cleaned that up, if you will.
So the charcoal kind of driveway area gives access to those two houses? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so this shaded area now that you're seeing is the easement area.
Yeah.
Okay, and so they both can, you know, share that and get to their homes.
Okay.
Um, parcel, okay, so parcel E, which we just talked about, um, will be combined with Lot 1A, which is in pink, or I'm sorry, A1, which is in pink, and it's creating a new parcel with legal easement access for future road development, okay? And at which time A2 will have legal frontage on a new road, okay, when that eventually happens. Um, and then the new lot, A2, or, um, 71 Marion Street, has the same 40-foot of frontage that it always did, but it also now has legal access through that easement. And again, we'll eventually, once we put a road in, have legal frontage, right, on that new road. I was trying to make this easier, but I'm not sure if I did. Questions?
So parcel E is going to be a roadway eventually?
A right-of-way, right, Craig? Do you wanna?
A paved right-of-way?
Yes, the charcoal area that you had, um, spoke about. Just, just so you know, our intent in the future, currently there's two, two houses, two owners, people living there, and we're trying to clean everything up, but the, the, the idea will be that we can bring, the charcoal area will become a, a road through subdivision process, but we need to own, it's three different parcels, so it was very convoluted with ownership. So we're trying to take a step to, you know, clean everything up so people can continue, you know, with their homes and we give them access, and then we can, we'll bring it all, you know, eventually in to put a road in. We're just trying to do a step towards that process.
And there's existing houses on Lot B1 and Lot A2, correct?
That's correct.
So Lot A1 is vacant?
That's correct. That'll be used for future development.
But and Lot B1, I see a circle there. Is that for future house?
Uh, B1, that's the existing, the circle is for the existing frontage on Marion Street that it has now.
Okay.
But there's a house in the back, correct?
You said B1, right?
Yeah, right, right, yeah. Okay, I got you. So the house is in the back. That's just to show the frontage off of Marion. And, but you're gonna let it, access through the easement will be actually its driveway, right? Is that what you're saying?
That's how it's already existing. That's correct. And the reason it doesn't have, like with a 100-foot circle is?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm putting my hand across the screen.
It's okay.
There's a, if you notice, there's a stream in the front, and there's already a crossing through the easement area. That's part of the situation that there was a wetland crossing there that everybody, or I should say those two homes have come across that bridge historically, or the concrete, um, area, so that's why it's in the, I guess that's why they're on each other's property.
So is the eventual idea with that road to develop the rest of like 73, I guess it is?
Yes, the, that's exactly it. There's land in the back and it's all owned by the owner of Lot B1. She lives there with her mother, and it's a family parcel. They own quite a bit of property in the back that'll be used for development. It's actually under agreements, and we're, you know, just moving forwards to, she didn't have all the access until we get rid of the other strip of land that was in the front, which was on the first map. And, um, also access through the original lot for A2. If you want, I can go back to that original plan, the way it is on the assessors map if you'd like.
So the idea though is tend up with three houses, right?
Well, I'm guessing the, it, well, I don't wanna put words in your mouth. Is, is the idea to eventually connect back up to, like, Murray Hill?
Actually, that's, that's a possibility. Not all the land is under agreements, but half of it is. And they would, they would like to do the rest. They just, they're just going baby steps to be transparent. They wanted to do, you know, a portion of it, and then work on the second portion, because it's different. This, this whole entire area, as we said, there's three family members that owned the front piece. Then there's more family members that own the back pieces, and they've been there since the 1800s. And there's one person that seems to control all the property, and that's the one that lives at B1 with her mother. They live in that front house and with the blue lot.
So does Lot A2 have access to Marion Street?
It, it, it'll have, currently it has 40 feet on Marion Street. It'll have that existing, I'm putting my fingers across again, I'm sorry. Uh, it, it'll have the same 40-foot frontage that it currently has.
Do you see how it comes back around and hits Marion Street, the yellow?
Yeah.
I see the property, but I'm saying, oh, is there a, is there a, an acceptable way, I guess, that they already have?
A hammerhead lot, not a hammerhead lot. The yellow A2 looks like a sort of an old hammerhead lot, so they did have frontage on Marion Street, but only 40 feet.
Which is what they still have, yes.
And Sean, they don't have access, um, they don't have any access through their own parcel to Marion Street. Um, they have access now through that easement that was created. Um, so they do have frontage on Marion Street with the 40 feet, um, but they don't have access through that frontage. Um, but we don't, our zoning doesn't require access from frontage. Um, so their, their driveway is within that, um, shared easement now, um, providing the actual access through A1.
Okay, that, that makes more sense.
How, how wide is the easement again?
50.
Uh, the easement is actually 75 feet wide currently. And the reason for that, it had utility poles, it had, the driveway was curving, and the engineer wanted to just be all-inclusive to make sure that the easement covers everything until the subdivision road gets in, and then we would, you know, bring it down to whatever the planning board would like for a right-of-way, maybe 50 feet.
Yeah, that was the reason I was asking, is so that we have flexibility when that comes.
Yeah, there's plenty of room, plenty of flexibility. And also, just, just to be transparent again, the, the idea of the existing home at A2, the, the frontage, we'd, we'd allow them to have new, um, access on the road since that's where their driveway is, and it just makes sense. And I know this is convoluted, I'm sorry. I just seem to get thrown into some of these things, and I'm, you know, just taking one step at a time, but we do have kind of a master plan that we're working with that, um, you know, we'll, we'll give everybody access and work with the planning board, obviously, with whatever needs to happen to make it all work with zoning.
So I just have a kind of a question as to, are you gonna rezone or realign some of these lots after you finish and put in a, a true right-of-way, you know, as opposed to just an easement? When you finish your subdivision of, uh, parcel B, and is parcel G gonna be part of B2? And are you giving parcel F to B1? Because it looks like you're doing that.
Yeah.
Yes, so, so that, that's exactly it. And there, there is a note on the Form A plan under notes that parcel F will become part of B1, which is the blue lot. That stays exactly how it is.
Yeah.
And the way A2 works, it'll, it'll have more frontage. It may get reconfigured a little bit, because it'll, it'll end up with frontage on the, you know, the new subdivision road. And I'm not sure what else will have to happen. We're just keeping the flexibility on, on, on that.
Yeah. Well, way parcel E is now, it doesn't go all the way to Marion Street, so you're gonna have to, you have an easement over A1 and then parcel E, or F, E. Can't read very well.
Yes, parcel E, um, parcel E was originally part of the B1 property. And so that's, that's kind of the confusing part was, again, there's the three parcels of land, and in order to get, you know, the, the ability to own the area that will become the roadway, that's what we're accomplishing, I guess, you know, in, in allowing, you know, ownership to move with, with the homes, because it's a little tricky, because there's homes with mortgages and, you know, this type of thing.
Yeah. You have to get permission from the mortgage company. The, the adjustments you're making won't affect the value of the property.
Exactly.
Which should be fine. So would parcel G then, which looks right now as you have it as part of A1, be, um, removed with that, with the road being done, and that it goes over to B2?
Uh, no, B.
Parcel G.
Parcel G will become, oh, you said B2. I'm sorry, yes, that's exactly it. And there's like 14 acres there or something like that, and this is like the front section. The next section's owned all by one owner, which is B1's mom and, and the, the people that live at, at B1. Um, I think the mom owns B2. We're actually doing the title work, because, you know, the, the mom owns it, but the daughter might own it, but the mom owns it. It's one of these. The mortgage. One.
The daughter.
What's that?
I was saying, the daughter probably owns the property of B1, but the mother has life interest in it or something.
Yeah, there's something going on there that the, the mortgage company only has a, even though it shows the whole parcel on the assessors map, going all the way back, including the 14 acres, the bank only has a mortgage in the front, and, you know, it's, 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 it's all, um, I don't wanna confuse anything more than that.
So this A and R, you know, if we approve it, there will be another adjustment to it through the subdivision plans?
Yes, with the subdivision plan, it'll come before the planning board, and then we'll take a comprehensive look at, you know, we, we're flagging wetlands and doing septic tests, and we have kind of preliminary plan, but, you know, it's, again, more information than you probably need to know, but we, we're, we're working, you know, with that behind the scenes to bring it to the next level. My intention is to bring this back to the planning board, but we need ownership so people can do their mortgages and we can have ownership of the road, so we're not spending money on engineering, you know, it's easy to spend a lot of money and then not have control of the land, and that doesn't work.
Yeah, okay. I'm good.
Everything's good, Val?
Yeah, we took quite a bit of time looking at this and, um, went back and forth with Craig and, and Luke with some comments, and they addressed those comments, so we don't have any additional.
It's kinda hard to, uh, see the overall big picture here for me, but, okay. Take a motion to accept the A and R as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Sean, how do you feel?
I'm good.
Angela?
Good.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
I vote good too. Yeah, you're all set.
All right, thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Take care. We'll see you soon. Thank you. Bye.
So we have a 7:45 public hearings, I plan review 20-07, Stormwater Management Plan Permit 20-07, and Parking Relief Special Permit 20-04, 613 Main Street. Are they here?
Yep, good evening. Uh, my name is Brian McCarthy. I'm with RJ O'Connell Associates. We're the civil engineers for the project. And, uh, on the Zoom call with me tonight is, uh, our Greg Hughes and Mark Lavoy of the, of Seon, who's the property owner and the developer. Also on the call is, uh, Richard Iandoli from Holman's, one of our new tenants, and, uh, Ron Mueller, our traffic engineer, and as well as Sarah Tranel Flores of Nutter, who's the project attorney for us.
Oh.
So this project, um, as you remember, uh, was approved last December. And the planning board at that time approved a special permit, uh, for a parking reduction as well as a site plan approval and a stormwater management permit. Uh, the project is a redevelopment of a, an existing 412,000 square foot warehouse industrial building at 613 Main Street. Um, the approved plan from December, um, it included three potential tenant spaces with a reduction in the building size to accommodate an additional 21 loading docks for a total of 44 truck loading docks and 24 truck, uh, trailer parking spaces. And it also included a total of 330 car parking spaces. Uh, that improved plan also included 9,400 square feet of office space and 378,000 square feet of warehouse space. So the last time the board, uh, saw us, we were permitting our, our project with a vacant building. And we knew that if we move forward with these improvements, it would attract tenants, and it did work. So the markets, uh, the second market spoke volumes, and we feel we have secured two really fantastic tenants uh, for the building and for the town of Wilmington. The two tenants are Holman's Associates and Lowe's Home Improvements Center. Um, Holman's, by the way, will be staying in town as opposed to moving out, and Lowe's is coming into town, bringing in good-paying jobs and will be a good corporate citizen. Um, so Holman's, for anyone that may not know, Holman's is a wholesaler of HVAC and mechanical insulation products. And they have, uh, 24 locations throughout the Northeast. Uh, their headquarters currently, um, and main distribution center are currently located at 250 Ballard Vale Street in Wilmington. They have been in Wilmington for, uh, over 20 years. And as their business is expanding and growing, uh, they have outgrown their current location and created the need for more space and more distribution warehouse space. Uh, so the property at 613 Main Street will serve as their new headquarters, and it's mean, uh, the main warehouse and distribution center.
So, but it'll be a distribution center, right?
Correct.
Right.
Their, their customers, their customers are, um, contractors and, uh, in the HVAC and plumbing and general contracting and mechanical insulation industries. That's their, that's their, um, customers.
But they don't have people coming in for the sales, right? They just distribute, right? Is that correct?
Their sales are to contractors. They, uh, so a lot of, a lot of the, um, operation here is involved with distributed products coming to this location, new products, and they will distribute products to their other 23 locations from here.
Okay.
Um, in addition to that, they will have, um, contractors, uh, which are the customers, the contractors would purchase products and merchandise, uh, either online or through phone orders or that kind of thing. And then the products and merchandise would be distributed to the sites, uh, really contract working, or in some cases, the contractor would come in with their own truck and, uh, collect, um, the purchased items. So the other, um, tenant, uh, is Lowe's Home Improvement Centers, and they intend to use this, uh, building for warehouse and distribution to support their stores in the, in the area. And so I'm gonna call up a plan. Do I have permission?
Yep. Yeah, it's good, Val?
Yeah.
We just said. I'm gonna call up the site plan. So here is the amended, let me just get this here, amended site plan. And as you can, well, you probably noticed there, you can't really notice much of a change here, because not much changed. Um, so, but I'd like to just go through the, uh, the list of, of changes that occurred on the plan. So as I noted, the, uh, the number of tenants, uh, has been reduced from three to two. We originally were, were planning on three. Uh, Lowe's will be on the east side in this area here, and Holman's on, on, on the west side. Um, one of the, the change here at Holman's, uh, originally we had 21 loading docks in this area here. Holman's is taking, wants to take two of those loading docks, uh, remove two of the loading docks, and change that to one tr- drive-in at-grade door. So we reduced the number of loading docks by two. Um, and that drive, that door, actually, I call it a drive-in door, but it's really a door where product, uh, with four lifts, product will be taken from inside and brought out to a customer's truck out here. And, um, so it's really for bringing material, bringing product out of the building. In the south parking lot, in this area, um, the parking area, we are proposing a change to accommodate what Lowe's wants to do. Lowe's wants to use 57 of the original approved parking spaces to accommodate. Wants to use fifty-seven of the original approved parking spaces to accommodate parking for fif- fifteen box trucks. As well as the additional maneuvering area needed to get into and out of those uh, box truck spaces. And that's in this area right here. So the original plan had two hundred and twelve uh, parking spaces in the south parking lot. And now we're going to have a hundred and fifty-five car parking spaces and fifteen box truck spaces. Um, and this plan shows revised striping to accommodate those box truck parking spaces. Uh, I would note that all the limits of paving, the landscape islands and everything else. In this area remains the exact same as was on the approved plan. It's only a striping change in here related to parking. Uh, and with, with regard to the amount of parking. So Lowe's has informed us that they need fifty-eight car parking spaces. And Holman's has informed us that they need a hundred and three car parking spaces. So that total is a hundred and sixty-one car parking spaces. Um, in addition to that, Holman's does approximately once a month or so, uh, may um. Need an additional thirty to forty spaces for training seminars that they hold. Uh, roughly once a month. So the total number of spaces required uh, with these two leases and these two leases take up the whole building. Is two hundred and one parking spaces. And that is well below the number of total parking spaces provided on this revised plan, which is two hundred and seventy-six parking spaces. So there's uh, an abundance of parking spaces will remain um, on the property uh, for the proposed uses. Give me an extra seventy total spaces in there. Um, for the Holman's. Uh, tenant, they are proposing to increase the amount of office space. Or convert warehouse and add some office space over here from what we had shown on the approved plan. Um, so there, because it's going to be their corporate headquarters, they uh, will have twenty-six thousand square feet of office space. And of that twenty-six thousand square feet, thirteen thousand of it will be on a second level within the building. Lowe's will have um, a total of five thousand six hundred and seven square feet of office space with. Two thousand seven hundred and sixty-one of that on second floor within their space. Uh, so the approved plan had nine thousand four hundred square feet and this proposed plan has thirty-one thousand six hundred square feet of office space. The twenty-six thousand square feet of Holman's office space does include, but they're calling it a wholesale marketing space, which is really a. An area where it's, it's about one thousand five hundred square feet and it's an area where their um. Customers are, can, can view finished products uh, within the store. Um, and then one other change on here is related to this front portion of the building. If anybody's familiar with the existing building. They'll know that, that the very front of this building, there's a um, an appendage on the front that um. The rounded portion here is a glass block. Um, this actually houses an internal stairway that, that comes from the ground floor up to the second floor. Our initial plan, we were getting rid of that, but Holman's um, has decided that they would like to keep that and uh. Serves as access to their second level. And so we had to make some just minor adjustments to the parking layout in this area to accommodate keeping that appendage. Um, so. Other than the, those few changes, the redevelopment plan remains the same as approved. There's no change to the impervious cover on the property and the limits of paved areas remain the same. There's no changes to the stormwater management drainage system, drainage design. Um, so that all remains the same. Um, as part of our uh, submittal and application, our traffic engineer Ron Mueller. Has uh, prepared a letter report documenting the changes in site traffic generation resulting from these modifications. Uh, that report concluded that uh, the change from three tenants to two tenants. Will not result in any increase in traffic to the site and in fact will result in a slight reduction, slightly fewer trips than in the previous approved plan.
Does it change, excuse me, does it change the type of trucks we're going to see? I mean, these are specific. Manufacturers here, so are we going to go, I see. You know, we're going to see more trailers, less trailers?
We actually have two less, two less docks, as I mentioned.
Yeah.
And we have reduction in these loading docks. These, the docks over here stay the same.
Yeah, but, but now we have, but now we know we, we have a specific. Companies coming in, right? So we know they deal with specific products that get delivered, right? So different kind of business, I guess, better way to say it. So I know you need the box. You said you wanted the. Lowe's wanted the box truck spaces, that, that makes sense. So is that what we're going to see? More of the box trucks? Are we going to see? Trailers? Cause if I remember correctly, the, the. In and out here was a little bit difficult, right? Going on to, to the main street, making that turn, wasn't this the one?
Um, yeah, so we had, um, well, we had submitted the truck turning plans and so on that showed the maneuvering and the access in and out of the driveway.
So nothing changes there, right?
Nothing changes there. Um, that remains the same. We still keep that. The um. The amount of traffic, like I mentioned, is still, is still slightly less than the overall numbers. But you still don't have any more truck, you have actually less trailer over here.
To, to answer, to answer one specific, so Lowe's. The majority of their traffic will be the box trucks. So they'll have product come in. Fifty-three foot trucks and then it goes out on the smaller box trucks.
Okay, so and, and Lowe's is uh, distributing to its stores from here? Is that what's happening?
They are, um, this is a um, fulfillment center for um, appliances. So they'll load up appliances. They load up these box trucks in the morning. Um, the trucks are gone for the day, delivering to customers and then they come back at night and they replenish, they replenish overnight with the fifty-three footers.
Okay.
And so the last thing I did want to note on this presentation is that with this amendment, uh, we're included, we want to um. Do this as a phased opening. Uh, so Lowe's on this right-hand side uh, would open first. Um, they would like to open at the end of November, um, eleven thirty. And then Holman's would be phase two, which would open in the spring of next year. Um, I did uh. Let me just stop this for one second. I did uh, send. Where you find it here, a phase plan. This is just a, a, a simple plan that shows. The phase one with the Lowe's and all the parking and everything on this side of the site, on the east side of the main driveway in. As phase one opening and then phase two is everything to the north or, or to the west of the driveway.
So when you talked about the spaces, so is everything to the low side for Lowe's and everything to the. Other side for the, for Holman's or they're going to share spaces, yes?
So, yeah, so.
Walk to that.
So Holman's, well, so Lowe's needed fifty-eight car parking spaces and box trucks and that's all provided.
Over there, right?
In this parking. In here. And so Low, or Holman's, as I mentioned, requires a hundred and three parking spaces, uh. Which is pretty much exactly what's over here. We've got a hundred and four parking spaces.
Okay.
So it works out very well in terms of.
Okay. So I guess you answered that. Each has its own, so whatever's to one side is one, whatever's to the other side is the other. Okay, gotcha.
So that's um, that's basically the overview of what we've done, what the changes and uh, we have to answer any questions. I'll bring up the other plan here so we can look at that.
I just want to go over some of the numbers. You threw a lot of numbers out, so just to be curious. So, so Holman's uh, needed a hundred and three spaces. Does that mean they have a hundred and three workers in the building or what? But they're office staff as well.
Um, so uh, and Richard's on the, on the lines well and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, they have uh, approximately seventy-five to a hundred employees. Between seventy-five and a hundred.
Okay.
That's correct.
And Lowe's has what?
So they're going to have basically the fifty-eight parking spaces that they need. For uh, their, their, so their uh, employees will come in in the cars and then they'll leave with the box trucks.
Okay.
And that, that fifty-eight is, to clarify, is over three shifts. So it's rare. It's all, all at once.
Oh, okay. Three shifts meaning we're working around the clock?
Uh, they will, they will work around the clock, yeah, to fulfill the orders for the, you know, for the next day. Orders coming in on the fifty-three footers.
So the, so the trucks won't be moving all, at all hours of the night. People will be inside the building, moving the boxes to where they need to be for the next day.
Correct. So the way, the way they described it to us is at night, product comes in on the larger trucks. In the middle of the night, they fill up the warehouse. And then in the morning, drivers show up, get out of their vehicles, get in the box trucks. Fill up in the morning, first thing in the morning, they're gone all day. They come back at night, do the whole thing over again.
Okay. But at any one time, do you know how many employees would be at Lowe's? I, I, not the guys driving the trucks, I mean, within the building. I'm just curious.
I don't know exactly. Uh, they gave us, you know, the, what's in their lease, what they negotiated as a, as parking was fifty-eight spots. Yep.
But is it safe to say, since we have fifteen box truck spaces, fifteen box trucks go?
Well, there's, that, that's fifteen in the south lot, Brian, so the. The, there's, there's already parking for trucks, for the larger trucks that they're going to park, park, park them.
Okay.
In this location, the rest of the box trucks, yeah.
I'm glad I'm not driving the trucks. I don't think I could fit in one of those spaces, so, but that's besides the point. Anybody else got anything they want to ask? What's on the other side of the tracks, Belle? On the backside? Not, not the main street side. We're not, we don't have any residential around there, right?
Um, there's a large wetland. Um, I, if you, if you go, if you go far enough, you're going to hit residential. But there's a, an expanse of wetland in between.
So there's pretty good buffer there, right? If I remember correctly and know the area pretty good, so.
Okay, I mean, there's a significant wooded area.
Yeah, yep. Uh, you know, everybody's ears pecker up when you say three shifts, so that's all. Okay.
Yeah, and, and we, we, Lowe's did talk to Al about that, um. You know, having that operation, just because it is, it is the best time for that stuff to come in.
Yeah, I know that, that kind of makes sense. Okay, anybody got any other questions?
When we did this earlier.
Go ahead.
Yeah, when we did this earlier, um. The access from that driveway. Not necessarily to thirty-eight, which I know is a point of contention, but actually over to one twenty-nine. Like, there's no good way to do that. You either have to take the tight turn on one twenty-nine or the. Tight turn on Cross Street. Is, is there? What can, what can those fifty-three foot trucks do? Are we going to run into an issue trying to get to ninety-three? And what, what do they do now?
So if you remember, we, we did go through this in pretty much.
Right. It was a while ago. I don't remember what we said.
Yeah, so, so I mean, and, and again, we're talking about the larger trucks that may, it's pretty difficult for them to make this turn over here.
Right, yeah.
So they, the trucks will uh, end up either going uh, north or south. On, on thirty-eight. Um, and not taking, not going across Cross Street. Um, in fact, I don't think they could even make that turn, uh, between Cross Street and um, and Lowell Street.
But so. Sorry, Brian, just one piece of information. We, when we bought the facility, Veritiv was operating, they were also a twenty-four seven operation. They, they told us that they were making that left and the right. We understand that. You know, that doesn't, that, that doesn't necessarily work, but they were, they had been making it for, for a long period of time.
You use them fifty-three footers, they, I, I don't know, they use full size?
Yeah, yep. They've, they had fifty-three footers for as long as they were in there. Thanks, Sweetheart Plastics. We, we went back and talked to them and they had fifty-three footers as well.
Man, it seems to me like. The preferred method than the other way, if you had to do it. And there's, there's enough width there to actually, to actually pull it off while other people are trying to drive by it. Even if it is tight and long, okay.
Uh, this is Rhonda. Um, I have just a couple of questions. Uh, these are both pretty much warehouses, not really open to the public, but they're distribution type centers. For Holman's and Lowe's.
That's correct, yep.
All right. The reason I ask is because I'm really noticing on the site plan. That almost all walking from parking areas have no sidewalks. There's a little bit of a sidewalk around Holman's on the left by that side parking lot, so that you don't have to walk in the driving lanes. But really to get from the remote area on the right side of Lowe's and that uh, second area where the box trucks are. You, you have to cross the little uh, narrow neck pavement to walk back over towards Lowe's warehouse. I didn't know if there was any way to get kind of a little sidewalk or something over, over the edge. Um, so that people aren't really walking in the driving lane. To get back to the warehouse if people are parking in that little remote area.
Yeah, so as you noted, um, on the Holman side, basically all their uh. Employees, employees are in those hundred and four spaces up there and. We have the sidewalks around the building up there to the door, around the area. And then on, so Lowe's needs the fifty-eight spots parking spaces and um, as you're noting. You know, a lot of these employees are actually going, getting into the box trucks. That are actually right here beside them.
Right.
Coming over here to get, pick up stuff. So there's not a lot, there really isn't any pedestrian activity much going on.
You gotta walk over to the box truck. From inside.
So they're parking here in the box trucks are right here, so.
Oh, so they're going to go right from their car into a box truck and then drive over to pick up product?
You know, not everybody, but a lot of these employees will be onto these box trucks, so.
I just think you might want to think about a small parking or small walkway, just in that little neck area. Because somebody at some point is going to have to walk to a car. A little guard shack or something, just a little sidewalk.
Yeah, in this area here, we could, we could strike something, we could strike out a, a side lane here, four foot or something.
You know, safety. You know, somebody's going to get hit by a car.
So what are we doing to the buildings? Are we doing anything architecturally? Are we putting? Units on the roof or what? Since now we know we had tenants and we got. Office space, uh, what are we doing?
Um, so the building design itself pretty much is what we had originally had shown on the approved plan. It really isn't. Other than the fact, I think that uh, the, the, the piece in the front here, I mentioned where we're keeping that appendage for the, for the uh. Stairway appendage over here. But the, the rest of it is pretty much what is kind of out there today. There's. Maintaining the windows around this office space over here that will be maintained. And this, this wall here all stays the way it is today, as it is today. And the loading docks on the side.
Hey. Sprinkling, we're going to have sprinkled buildings and so.
Oh, yes, definitely. These are all uh, up to code. The sprinkler system's updated to meet the code requirements as, as is all the other mechanical stuff within the building.
All right. All right, anybody got any other questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Belle, you good?
Uh, we did have some minor comments. Um, Paul had a comment letter that um, we distributed to you. Um, with uh, one comment about the um, the drive-in door change. Um, with, um, one comment about the, um, the drive-in door change, um, in, in place of the loading docks. Um, that will likely require a, um, an oil-water separator. So to add that to the plan. That was one comment. And then, um, also, we had some minor comments, um, placing signage for the compact, um, parking spaces. And wherever possible, where the chain link fence is being replaced, um, replace it as close to the pavement as possible. Uh, down in the, the corner of the Lowe's portion, um, so moving it away from the wetland and, and as close to pavement as possible. And then we did, um, just to check the, um, the traffic memo that was submitted, we had Green International do a, um, just a, a quick review, peer review of the, the traffic memo. And Corinne Tobias from Green International is on the meeting, if you have any questions about that, but, um, she had, um, reviewed that for us. Um, she had, um, a couple of comments, um, just to revise one of the sheets to show the, the van accessible, um, parking spaces on that sheet, as it's shown on another sheet. And then also to, um, to revise, um, the turning maneuvering sheet. So that the W, WB sixty-seven trucks entering the site from the site driveway don't encroach on the westbound exiting approach. Um, Brian, I don't know if you could zoom into that spot.
Yep. So that was, uh, right here where, when the trucks are coming in and making this left turn going this way. Our, uh, our maneuvering plan showed the, the trailer dragging over the corner of this, um, stop bar here. So we can, we will adjust that to make sure that the, it's clear of the stuff.
Okay.
And those were the comments that we had. Um, because those comments we felt could be conditioned, we did prepare some drafts, if you'd like to consider them, and worked those comments into the drafts.
I think we can do that. You wanna close the public hearing? Uh, what do you want to do?
Um, if you all are satisfied with, um, with the, um, the plans and, and the responses, um, we can see if there's any comments from the public. We do have some callers on. Um, so we can check with, um, check to see if there's any comments. If you do have a comment, you can raise your hand, use the raise hand function. Um, if you'd like to make a comment. I don't see any comments. So Mr., so Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to close the hearing, I think that's, um, that could be appropriate and you could consider the, um, the drafts.
Okay, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing for site plan as amended.
So moved.
How about Rondi?
Um.
He's on mute.
I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Hey. Angela?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Rondi?
Yes, I'm unmuted.
Okay, chairman votes yes. Okay, site plan is closed. We could go over the conditions if you'd like. You wanna take the screen, Val? Put them up?
Sure.
Cheryl's mad at me. She didn't print everything out for me, so.
Okay. So we'll, we could start with the, uh, site plan. Draft. We have a site plan review approval, a, a parking, parking special permit and a stormwater approval. So. So here you see the, um, the draft for site plan. And I'll just run through it real quick. So for this, um, let's wait for it to hopefully catch up here. Um.
Haven't seen that happen before.
Yeah, that's in, interesting and new.
The applicant, you've seen these, uh, conditions?
Yes, we have, yep.
You have any questions while she's getting the screen squared away?
Uh, no. Pretty good.
Okay.
Let's try it. There we go. Okay. So we'll add the, um, the exhibit plan that Brian showed for the phasing. We'll add that to the materials, um, section right here. And, um, findings are typical findings for site plan review. We did mention in number five that it's also, um, has a, a parking relief special permit. Um, which we'll go over. General conditions, I, do you want me to read through all of the conditions or, um, just the ones that are changing from last time?
Yes, what's changing is fine with me. It's okay with everybody. Good, go ahead.
Okay. If it cooperates. Okay. So prior to endorsement of the plan, um, that number eleven is just, it's requiring that, um, oil-water separator be shown on the plan. Um, per the state plumbing code. Number twelve is to add the van accessible parking spaces to, um, the overall site plan sheet. And then number thirteen is to revise that, um, that turning approach so that it doesn't, um, overlap.
Okay.
And then we're gonna have, um, prior to issuance of building permit, just have the fire department look at the revised plans. And there was a comment from Deputy Posy about, um, now that there's a drive-in door, um, the sprinkler requirements may change. And, um, the carbon monoxide requirements may change for the building. So, um, having them review the revised plans, um, would be helpful. And then since we're already under construction, we took out the, um, the prior to construction conditions. During construction, uh, fifteen signage denoting the compact parking spaces be installed. And sixteen, um, as I mentioned, replacing that chain link fence, um, as close to the pavement as possible, uh, moving it away from the wetland. Seventeen, we changed, um, to that they should adhere to the earth removal special permit that was issued. And then they still need to do number eighteen with the, um, the C T D, CCTV with the roof drains. Prior to occupancy, this section, um, changed a little bit in that we worked in the, um, the phasing concept into this section. It keeps bouncing on me. All right, so in nineteen stays the same. There's a fair share contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars to the roadway network. Number twenty, prior to final occupancy, but no later than January first. The owner has agreed to and shall provide a deed transferring ownership of the parcel shown on Assessor's Map forty, parcel thirteen A. Um, and that is the corner of Cross Street and Main Street. It's a little kind of corner piece that, that the, um, that they own. And we've actually gotten a draft deed, um, reviewed by council already, so that's in progress. And that will facilitate the, the Route thirty-eight, um, reconstruction project for realigning Cross Street and Butters Row. Twenty-one, um, is a new one. Um, the applicant shall coordinate with the Federal Railroad Administration, FRA, to determine if and what signage is required at the at-grade crossing. And then all required signage shall be installed prior to the issuance of the first occupancy. Um, this came up, um, I guess there, there may be, um, no horns blown. Um, signs required at this crossing, um, but the applicant should coordinate with the FRA. And then prior to the issuance, issuance of the first and final occupancy, as-built plan shall be submitted to the town engineer and director of planning and conservation in the form and formats acceptable. Number twenty-three, um, giving notice to the engineering division for inspections. And then twenty-four, all site work shall be substantially completed in accordance with the approved site plans prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for each phase. And then in the event that winter, um, conditions prohibit final landscaping and/or finished pavement, um, they could supply a bond. In that case, um, I did want to, um, mention to the, the board, um, they will, since they're looking for an occupancy, um, soon, this month, um, they'll be in sort of a strange little place where they'll have approved plans from the past. They'll have, um, an approval, um, potentially for, from tonight, um, but they won't yet have plans endorsed. Um, so when they're looking for occupancy, um, is the board comfortable with looking at these approved plans? Um, rather than the plans that were approved before, uh, would be just a question that I'd, I'd want to, um, to get your feedback on. And then all of the, um.
It should be these approved plans. I'm signing them, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, they'll have to make a few changes that we outlined in these conditions, um, but I don't think there are anything to, to, um, they're pretty straightforward changes. So I think these plans would be the appropriate plans to, to use. And then, um, post-construction, all remains the same. And I can go over the, um, the other two, but the, um, parking special permit, um, essentially has the, the same, um, conditions. We, um, we carry over the parking conditions from the site plan approval into that one. And the stormwater, um, has all of the, the standard conditions as well. So the site plan review one that we just went over has all of the, all of the conditions. And then some of the conditions are repeated in this, the special permit and the stormwater permit.
Okay. Any questions? Angela, you okay?
Good.
Rondi, you all right?
Yep.
Terry?
Great.
Sean?
Yep.
Take a motion to accept the conditions as submitted.
So moved.
Okay. Angela?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman votes yes. You guys are all set?
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. What would you like to do next? You wanna wake up Ciara so she can do, uh, Board of Appeals? Uh, do you wanna do meeting minutes and wake up Cheryl? Which one?
They look pretty awake to me.
Ciara looks comfortable. Let's, let's go. What do you got this year? What do you got? Do the Board of Appeals.
I'll just get my, I'm out. Oh, I'm sorry. I have very, uh, bad lighting with this, in this room. Um. Okay. So the first Board of Appeals, um, actually Valerie, I don't know if you, are you, do you have them up on your screen to, to share by chance or are people looking at their packets?
I will, I can, I can pull them up as you talk.
Okay, perfect. Um, all right. So the first one is, um, fifteen Jacob Street. Uh, so they're looking for, um, a variance. They're in R-ten and they're on a corner lot, um, on Cunningham and Jacobs. And, um, they're looking to construct a twenty by fifty-one addition. It's just over about a thousand square feet. Um, it's for a garage, uh, basement for storage area and an in-law suite. Um, it's proposed eighteen and a half feet from Cunningham Street, which again is their second frontage. So it's supposed to actually, um, let's see, thirty feet is actually required there. It does meet all the other setbacks. Um, it's not, also to, just wanted to point out, it's not located within the, um, twenty-five foot corner triangle, because I know sometimes, um, in these situations, do you guys look at that? Um, the hardship is, is described as, as needing it for, um, the applicant's, uh, parents. Her father in, in particular is having some significant, um, health issues and his condition is deteriorating. Um, he needs some long-term care. And they state that, um, you know, doing a, a nursing home is kind of cost prohibitive and also, uh, with, with COVID nineteen, they, they feel that that's not really an option they can pursue right now. Um, so basically it's, it's to have the parents move in so that they can, the family can all, um, help take care of the father as his, you know, he has some ambulatory challenges that are, that are worsening. Um, and it is, again, it is a variance because of that, that setback. I don't know if you guys wanna see the, um.
Did you meet any setbacks on the, on original house?
Yeah, the original house is conforming, so it's not, um, it's not one of those special permits that we see a lot for extending the non-conforming structure. It's actually, actually just a variance because the new, um, addition is proposed, uh, less than, than what's required from, from Cunningham Street.
See those? They're adding a garage.
Yes, I believe a garage, um, also a, a full, um, they're doing a full basement under the area for, um, looks like some storage. If I'm remembering correctly. Um, and then also in, in law suite itself for the, um, for the parents. But it looks like they're kind of trying to do it all in, in one addition.
Huge.
It is one story though, I give that.
Yep.
They were adding two, I'd say no.
You know, I'm not sure if the garage is necessary for dad to be there. How many bedrooms are in the house anyway?
Good question.
Didn't show that upstairs.
Actually, that house is probably on sewer, to tell you the truth. Don't ask me how I know that, but I do.
Well, the bedrooms upstairs are a minimum three, maybe even four, depending on how they fit the layout.
Um, I believe that, that the, the current, the people who currently live in the house, um, I believe it's a, a husband and wife and then they have two, two children, I think. So there are four people living in the house as of right now.
Wait, you know that?
Um, okay, yeah, it's, it's, uh, the applicant, her husband and their two teenage daughters are currently living in the house. And so the plan is for her parents to move in for all, all four of them, um, and her mother to, to help him out.
Well, actually, the in-law apartment is actually relatively small. It looks very congested for the kind of investment deal from the garage to the main house and the apartment.
The, the only thing that I see that they'd be able to do differently, uh, in, yeah, put the in-law, in-law apartment on, but, um, you know, they're not using any of the back of the house, which would conform. There, there is only building out the side. I mean, there, there is, you know, there, there's a way that they, you know, could encroach less on the Cunningham Street setback. You know, they'd have to give up the garage. The garage, you know, there's no real way to do that. But I don't know that. I don't know that that falls within the hardship. I'm not sure, but, um, I guess if we're trying to stick with the letter of the rules, then.
Yeah, the garage is facing, uh, Jacob Street.
Right, right. But if we're, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking, if we're trying to stick within the letter of the rules, then, you know, we could probably say that they don't actually need the garage and they're not really usel, utilizing the back of the house to, you know, make a kitchen work or something like that. And then, you know, maybe all they have sticking off the side of the house is a bedroom and that only approaches. And then, you know, maybe all they have sticking off the side of the house is a bedroom and that only approaches five feet. Beyond the thing, I don't know, just thinking out loud.
Yeah, and if I could remind the board, the variance standard, when you're looking at a variance, you know, you consider the shape of the lot, the topography, the soil conditions. To, you know, to see what, you know, if there, there is a physical hardship on the lot. And that. It's sort of a high, a hard standard to meet.
Living situation not supposed to be considered?
Sorry?
Like a living situation is not supposed to be considered?
I don't think, I don't think so.
Is financial, one of the, one of the ones that falls under hardship? Okay. I mean, I'm not necessarily saying that's the case here, but they did.
Things change, I mean, you know. They get hit by a bus tomorrow and then they get this addition and makes the value of the house, someone else moves in. You know, it's the old argument about I want to build something for my daughter and then they get divorced, right? So, you know, that happens, so. It has to be based upon its judgment of how it fits in. These are, these are the ones that are difficult, so. I would say, I would say we should recommend that it's kind of a big scale. I mean, it sticks too far beyond each end of the house, I mean. At least from that.
I don't think it's necessarily a hardship per se, and they could put the addition on the back where the deck is.
That's what I'm saying.
And then I don't know what's behind the house either, like they don't show if there's another property back there or what it, what they're rebutting. I don't know the area.
Yeah, there, there is, I mean, it's a, it's a.
It's pretty dense.
Yeah, I mean, there's another house back there, but they only have to meet, is it 10 or 15 to the back?
I mean, if they're claiming hardship, they can get rid of that deck, try to put some sort of addition on for dad or granddad.
Back here.
And kind of. Go that way.
Yeah, it's probably 15 to the back, right? What they're building there is 18.8 and sticking 15 behind the, the end of the house. I mean, they. I don't know, I mean, there's, there, there's a, there's a way to do it that could. That could be a lot less of a, a lot, a lot further away from Cunningham Street, put it that way. You know, the garage is a tough sell on the, on the, on the variance.
Yeah.
That they, that they indicate, you know, so.
They need 30 feet on the Cunningham side of the property, right?
Right. So like putting anything on the side of it is kind of tough, I mean, six feet. They've only got. Six or seven feet available to them on the side of the house, so. I, I would get a small, you know, over the, over the. Over the setback, but.
Yeah, the other thing is that Cunningham's the main drag. Jacobs is just a small side street, right? Goes out from, from Cunningham to Faulkner, I believe. So, you know, you're going to see that side of the house. It's not, it's not as part of the front of the house, you know what I mean? It's not gonna. Click into the, what, so what's the section of the house look like? Go to the next. Yeah, so that's what you're going to see at Cunningham side, right?
Yeah, where Cunningham is, is really a street that, that houses front, front on.
Right. That's not gonna look good. At least they got the windows in there breaking up, I'll give them that, they've been listening to Rondi, so.
They don't know me.
And it's not overly high, so I, I could see that's, that's pretty good. I think we beat this up enough, Ciara, you good? You know what to say? You know, we think that some more consideration should be given to fitting it into the lot and maybe not have the garage.
I don't think they've expressed the hardship.
Plus, we don't believe that that's a hardship, that's correct. Hardship's supposed to be like if the town came through and took part of their front lot. Right? That's what the hardship's supposed to be.
Yeah, or maybe if they have a triangle shaped lot, you know, something like that.
This is a 10,000 square foot lot and we add a. How wide is that addition? It doesn't really give you a dimension, but it's gotta be 20 feet.
Yeah, so it says 20, 20 by 50, so it is a thousand, 1,000 square feet, two levels, right?
No.
Yeah, but. They're putting the garage in and the full basement, right?
No, it's not a full basement.
That's what she said.
Partial basement.
There's like a crawl space and some storage, I think.
There's no stair in the plan going down in the addition. It probably broken through openings like the windows. See the little stairs from the garage up into the apartment, there's no.
Yeah, okay.
There downs over in the main house. Probably cutting an opening in the foundation to make a connection through. If they want. I just think it's gonna McMansionize the size of the, the size of the house, gonna overpower the lot.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
Okay. All right, um. The next one is 3 Factory Street. They're doing a special, looking for a special permit for groundwater protection districts for going over the 15%. So they're looking to install. A pool. That is 15 by 30 and it's like a ellipse type of, of shape, like an oval. And. They're also installing a roof, an underground roof infiltration system. To, to help account for that, that extra. Impervious, impervious area in the groundwater protection districts. And basically. Yeah, they're proposing about 5,000 square feet or 19% of the lot as impervious.
Lots 26,000 square feet, and they want to have 15,000 impervious?
Five thousand, wait, hold on. Sorry, let me, I think 5,000.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's about 19% of the lot and that's why they're putting in the roof infiltrator to, to try to help account for that.
I don't think that's so bad, it's a pretty good sized lot.
Fine by me, right? It's typical of what we're seeing, right?
Yeah.
Very large driveway area. That's part of the, may have a three car garage under that. Definitely.
It does look wide.
Don't see plans or elevations in their application.
It's a super.
I'm gonna be in trouble when I come in for my, my in-ground pool, boy. Looks good.
This one's fine.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Everybody good? Okay. All right, uh, next, let me see here. Okay, so 15 Dorothy Ave. They are also looking for a special permit for groundwater protection district and they're also installing a pool. They're looking to do an 18 by 38 in-ground pool and, you know, with a kind of a strip of patio around it. The lot does have, let me see, okay, the lot does have an existing sports court. And then a walkway from there to the area that says concrete pavers. And those two things are proposed to be removed. I don't think they gave the existing impervious, but I mean, you can kind of see on the plan. That they, they are probably over the impervious right now and it may be kind of similar that, that they're proposing. It's 5,258 square feet or 23.4% of the lot. They're proposing an infiltration trench to mitigate the excess impervious area. And again, they're, they're removing some existing impervious and then putting some, some new impervious.
Little sports court, is that like a basketball court?
Tennis court?
Actually not sure.
That's pretty sweet.
They're taking it out though, right?
Yes, they are.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't very big though.
But you know sheds don't meet setbacks.
I see the shed. Yeah.
Will meet the setbacks, right?
Yes. Yeah, the setbacks are fine with that. They're just doing the, because they're over the 15% in the groundwater protection districts. That's the other issue here, I guess. Not issue, but you know what I mean?
Fine by me.
Looks all right.
All right, was, was everyone good or was that just one person that?
No, that looks good.
You had, okay. All right, and the last one. It's another special permit for groundwater. They're looking to do an addition. 26 by 40, it's a garage for existing single family house. It's a little over 1,000 square feet. And they're also proposing to slightly expand the existing driveway. So the, the existing impervious area is about 2,500 square feet or 12 and a half percent of the lot. The proposed is about 3,500 square feet or about 18% of the lot. The roof rate drain infiltration system is proposed to mitigate that excess. And also this project did already go through the, the planning conservation department for a simple stormwater management permit, which was issued on October 22nd this year with this, this same plan.
So the thing that looks like a pool is the infiltrator, right?
Uh, in the, kind of the middle of the lot, I think that might be the septic.
That's the septic right here. And then the infiltrator is over here on the side.
What's container and container, is that what that says?
Yeah, it does.
Where is Marcus Road? I'm not familiar with that one.
Oh, it's off, it's the Gowing Road neighborhood up Park Street.
Oh, okay. What else we got for a plan here? What do we got for setbacks to the addition? Did it meet the setbacks?
Yeah, it does. All the setbacks are fine. It's, um, let's see, it's an R10, so it's required a 15 foot side setback and theirs is 16. Yep, and they're far enough from the front. The existing house is a little bit too. Yeah, it's about three feet too close to, to Marcus Road, but that's not an issue with building, I believe. Because the, the addition is conforming, so they don't have, they're not going through the extending a non-conforming structure process for that.
Looking at the rest of the houses and the rest of the houses. Lot of, few of them are closer to Marcus Road than it is. So they can weigh in with that loophole too, so.
Seems okay.
Yeah.
Guys, good? Yeah. Good.
Take a motion on the minutes of May 5th, June 2nd and June 9th.
And the only thing from May 5th was, um, there was nothing in there about Sean recusing himself on the, the one on most. I don't think, unless I missed it.
There was nothing in there about Sean excusing himself, is that what you said?
Yeah, the vote was in there, it's him recused, but, but it's not him. It's just one recused that at the beginning it normally would say like so-and-so accused himself in the discussion or something, whatever it says.
Do I usually do that? Only when the chairman does.
I don't know.
No, we should, we should put it in.
But there was no indication of who recused themselves, themselves.
Yeah, you should record that it was.
There was a special permit. Right?
It was the Lowell Street, the Joe Langone property.
Yeah, that, that, that's the, that, those are part of the records of the decision.
Yeah, but Sean wasn't a butter, so he didn't vote, right?
Yeah, on page 10. The middle of page 10. Upon motion duly made and seconded with four in favor, one recused. So we'll put in parentheses there, Sean. But then at the beginning of it, we should indicate that he had recused himself.
Yeah, that, that was all, that was all I saw.
Take a motion to accept the planning board meetings on May 5th as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Angela?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Rondi?
Yes, sir.
Terry? Chairman votes yes. June comes after May. The June 2nd meeting minutes? How were they? They looked pretty good. Angela, they look fine. Did you make a couple of minor corrections or what?
Yes, minor.
Take a motion to accept the June 2nd. Planning board minutes as amended, minor corrections. To the grammar. Angela?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman says yes. June 9th. Take a motion to accept the June 9th minutes? Do we make any correction to those?
Just a few small things.
Couple commas.
So moved. As amended.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Angela?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. It is November, right, Cheryl?
Yeah. We're getting there. One more thing.
What do we got?
Zoning.
Zoning. Did everybody see the schedule for 2021?
Yeah, it looks fine. I vote for September fourteenth for because I'm gonna go on a six-month vacation starting about June next year.
I say we go with July thirteenth, not July sixth.
Second.
I think that's fine.
So we want September fourteenth and July thirteenth? Is that what we said?
Yes.
Good show. All right, what do we got on zoning?
All right, I'll be quick. There's a sheet on each of these in your Dropbox. First one. Since commercial projects come to you for site plan review, the idea is to move their groundwater special permit to your purview instead of the zoning board of appeals. So what happens now is that they get a site plan approval from you. They go through every all of the design with Paul and make sure everything meets the requirements. And then they have to go to the ZBA for this groundwater special permit. The ZBA relies on your approval and Paul's recommendation. So we'd propose to eliminate the ZBA step for the non-residential projects because they're already in front of you, so let's wrap it all into one.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Yes.
That was an idea brought to me by Bob Peterson years ago, and I put it on the list, and now it's coming up. So.
All right, well, don't tell him he had a good idea. It'll go to his head.
The the next two I discussed with the Economic Development Committee, and I think Mike might be on the line, but he wanted me to express the the committee's full support for for these next two general service restaurants. These restaurants are right now require a special permit through the ZBA. There's a lot of criteria that goes with it. A crazy landscaping requirement, a lot size that's that's larger than than typical lots in that district. All discouraging restaurants from from coming in. So the idea would be to encourage restaurants, general service restaurants in town by eliminating the special permit and allowing them as of right in the general business, central business, and neighborhood neighborhood mixed use and the highway industrial. Those are the districts that currently allow by special permit. So it's to take away the special permit and the special permit criteria and allow them as of right. It would still come to you for site plan review and stormwater.
So say those again, the neighborhood mixed use.
Neighborhood mixed use, highway.
Do we have an example of a neighborhood mixed use that we can visualize it in?
Yeah, sure. So the the Lowell Street corridor. Lowell-Wuburn intersection, that corridor. That's where we we rezoned that a few years ago. That's really the the chunk of the neighborhood mixed use. Central business is. What's that?
That'd be the area of the ninety-nine, aren't they, in that area?
Yes, yep.
Yep.
The central business at the train station, general business throughout town, and then the highway industrial.
Not neighborhood business.
Not neighborhood business, no.
What's the reasoning for that?
Not in neighborhood business?
Yeah.
Neighborhood business is a weird zone if you look at it.
It's not much of it around.
Right, it's sort of little little spots where it was almost like little existing shops that they didn't want to. They didn't know what to do with, so they said it was neighborhood business, it seems. So there's a lot of lot of residential around it, so it's
Okay.
Typically smaller scale.
Yeah.
Uncle Mickey's used to be, I don't know what it's called now, over by Shawshank School. Lake Street, Shawshank Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, well, that's general business now.
Is it?
Yep.
I don't remember.
Neighborhood business is like the Grove and Thirty-Eight, for instance.
Yeah.
Or like Clark Street and Thirty-Eight.
Well, originally, we did neighborhood business for that that red clouded thing over by the Shawshank. I don't know if they came to change it to general business. I don't remember that.
Okay.
So the idea is to eliminate the special permit, allow restaurants as of right, at least the general service restaurants, which aren't typically are typically typically not the drive-through style restaurants. They're the sit-down restaurants.
Mr. Chair, this is Mike Shampoo. May I, is is it appropriate for me to offer a comment here, or should I wait for another moment?
Since you asked, will I just speak?
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, I I want to just really just state generally that the Economic Development Committee has put forth an effort, a stated effort, to try to create an environment that's more inviting to would-be businesses to our community, to try to eliminate speed bumps, so to speak, or or roadblocks, or the perception that that perhaps we might be not a business-friendly community. So wherever it's appropriate to make these kind of changes without creating or without minimizing or diminishing the the authority of the planning board, it seems appropriate. So that's really, I think, the rationale here. From an economic development perspective, we certainly support this measure and the one that that comes next for the for the very same purpose. And and that being said, it's both of these recommendations that Valerie's making this evening are consistent with the findings of the UMass Donahue Institute Main Street Market Study that was done in two thousand nineteen. And one of those findings, I don't have it right at my fingertips, but one of those findings was to create a more experiential type of I guess, zone or or business model. And 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 look at the zoning where applicable to make these kind of changes that are being recommended here. So I just wanted to, I guess, speak on behalf of the committee. I know Valerie is is a member of our committee, the Economic Development Committee as well, and does very well speaking for us as well, but I just wanted to have another voice to advocate for these measures. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. These are a couple of things we've been talking about with Val for a while. I think one of the things about six thirteen Main Street, if if anybody was paying attention, I kept asking about how many employees. It's kind of like what I was thinking a little bit, you know. Two businesses, if we're talking about adding a hundred and fifty employees, would kind of help some of these smaller places for lunch and dinner and that kind of stuff, breakfast or whatever. I think we ought to start thinking about that. I think that's one of the reasons some of our places have been going down. When I when I we don't have those you know, corporate businesses in the center of town. We have them up. That's part of the reason why we changed the zoning a little bit on Ballardville Street, too, was so that those people could stay and have lunch where they work. So so I think it's I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, and the next one plays right into the previous. And and we what what the Economic Development Committee has heard with surveys is that residents really want more restaurant options. So this is all sort of consistent with that trend as well, but the the third item is to propose a new use brew pub. Breweries would would currently, I think, fall under an industrial category, be allowed in our industrial districts because it's manufacturing. But this is more of a a restaurant as a primary use, but they also brew beer. So it's it's more of a more of an experiential type of of restaurant, I guess, where it's not just a restaurant. There's other interest factors involved. And currently, I don't I don't know that our zoning really has a category for this because it would be sort of a mash of restaurant and and manufacturing. So the idea would be to create a new use, define it, and also to allow it in the the districts that we would allow the restaurants as of right, general service restaurants. So neighborhood mixed use, general business, central business, and highway industrial. And again, these would be restaurants primarily, but they also brew beer and sell it wholesale, retail. So a different different style of of retail restaurant use that seems to be popular.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah.
I think they're good ideas, you know, and the changes are needed. I don't know if you can answer this, Val, but being on the economic development team there, did they figure out reasons why people haven't come to town and and had businesses here in the restaurant industry, or why they're staying away? Besides the things that we're trying to do to make it easier. I don't know if these are the exact reasons why people are not coming here or or restaurants aren't coming here, but I just I just wondered what the results were from that.
They we've we've sort of been looking into it. I think there's probably a lot of different reasons. You know, I think Main Street's a little tough because it's removed from the highway. People really, we had a brewer who was actually interested in space in Wilmington. He didn't want to go to Main Street because there was a little bit more congestion than he was looking for. He liked a spot on Lowell Street because it was closer to the highway. I guess things didn't exactly work out with that particular property. So, you know, we've heard stories like that. We don't have sort of an overall, we've heard that, you know, business non-residential taxes are high in town. So we've heard different things. I guess this is one of the the one of the things that we can change that we have control over, at at least at this level, and can kind of make a a change to encourage those uses, whether it will. We'll have to see if it actually changes what comes in or not. But I think part of it, too, is just a you know, sometimes when you make a small change, but you tell people about that change, they actually become interested in the in 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 the town and being open and friendly for those types of businesses can go, I think, a long way in in when people are looking for space.
Sure.
I think I think as we go to some of these mixed use, you know, buildings and apartments, people are going to want some places where they can do a little more walking, you know, to a place to eat, have a drink.
Yep.
I think that'll be a little more encouraged.
Yeah.
On the on the brew pubs, is there a is there a limit, or are we going to define like the quantities or something like that that could happen in, say, like the neighborhood mixed use or something that really you know, buts a residential area like, I mean, that, you know, brewing with any you know, to any quantity is, I mean, it is kind of an industrial use, right? So if if, you know, if it were to take off or something like that, and they tried to maximize their production in the space, like, we can end up with a pretty congested you know, small, you know, place where it's it's really doing something that we didn't intend, right?
There are some there are some zoning bylaws that limit it to different numbers. I've seen fifty percent. Not more than fifty percent sold off-site or not more than twenty-five percent sold off-site. So there are limits that you can place within sort of the definition of a group.
That's, I mean, I don't know what the right is, what the right number is, and it's, you know, we probably don't want to leave it completely open-ended, but we probably want to be probably just want to have a number, even if it's a big number that, you know, is friendly. But, you know, without you know, I just worry about some super congested place in a you know, brewing all night and, you know, in a place where it's not really meant to do that.
Yeah, there was also, there was a, I know there was a complaint from the restaurant slash package industry because it was a little bit of a loophole with all restrictions because of COVID that certain places couldn't do, but the breweries were able to get around. So it's something we got to, I'll look into that a little more, be a little more specific.
Yeah, we can do that. Right now, the way it's worded, the, you know, the zoning enforcement officer or the building inspector would have to would have to determine whether it's meeting the definition of the primary use as a restaurant. So, you know, it would have to be primarily a restaurant. So, you know, at least fifty percent or more a restaurant rather than a brewing operation. So it's 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 a little bit. It's, he would have to make a call on that. So there aren't any numbers currently in this proposal, but there are other bylaws that do have numbers, so we can look into that.
Yeah, that's all. I I mean, I wanted to be friendly, obviously, and I get what the committee is trying to do. So that makes nothing but sense. But I just, you know, I wondered if you guys actually looked at that and said. I guess that was the question. Have you looked at that and said, no, no, we don't want to put any numbers on it? Or 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 have you just not gotten there or what?
I I looked at those, I considered those, and I thought, you know, they're just very arbitrary. So you know, I we can use a number. I think that's something that definitely can be done. But you still have to kind of gauge you know, what's how it's primarily a restaurant. So you would just be limiting what they sell off-site rather than you know, which is related to how much, you know, they brew, I guess, but it seemed limiting. But that's the but no, but that's the point, I guess. Like, that's the point you're making. Maybe we do, maybe you do want it to be limited.
I don't know the right answer. I
Yeah.
It's just the current meeting, honestly, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have some time to talk about it.
You know, when you were talking about it a couple of months ago, I was like, oh, yeah, great idea. And it's popped in my head today, so.
We can do more. We can do more research and and get it to you for next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay, and then the last one is an area Mozart, which is off of Aldrich, close to Boutwell. This is an area of town that the the lots are primarily, you know, ten thousand square feet. They're small lots, but it's zoned R-twenty. And a couple came in for a variance this summer for a pool. They were denied. She called me afterwards and was talking about rezoning. And, you know, so I I told her that I would bring it up with the board, and we would look at the sort of the whole neighborhood, the whole kind of area as as a a block of land. And I think it's appropriate to to look at this, to downzoning it to to R-ten to reflect the current sizes of lots. It'll give people an opportunity to do a little bit more with their parcels. So that's the idea, similar to what we did with McDonald Road.
You had feedback from other residents or?
We haven't. We haven't. So last year, when we did McDonald, we reached out to all of the property owners to invite them to the December meeting. We could do that. We could invite them to the meeting, get any sort of feedback from them.
How how far are you looking to go? Is it just the three roads here, like Bailey, Mozart, and Marietta?
That's right.
Or is it across the street, too?
No, I was limiting it to Bailey, Mozart, and Marietta. There's a there's a a map in the Dropbox, kind of outlining the area, really trying to stick to the ones that are are well under twenty thousand in size. So the would it be the the north side of Marietta to the to the north side of Bailey?
Oh, I get the map.
Yeah, I think that looks good.
So we could So we could, um, we could invite those people into next meeting to, um, and have it on the agenda?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Great. That's all I've got. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Hey. Does anybody get anything else? Everything good?
Well, so I have a question about, uh, hours of operation, mostly over at, uh, what is his name? Uh, Channel Builders there, the channel company.
Yeah.
So for the last like two and a half, three months, I've been, uh, going to work at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning to beat traffic and to get my day started early because I work better when I'm, um, I'm a morning person, let's put it that way. At 3 o'clock in the afternoon, I'm not very well, not very good. So, um, they have a huge trucking operation there next to the Dunkin' Donuts and every single one of those trucks, there must be 25 or 30 trucks all running at the same time, warming up, loading up. And this is like before 5:00 AM. I can't imagine the neighbors aren't starting to.
And a bunch of those trucks parked across the street in the open lot?
No, 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 they're all around the channel building, backing up to the loading docks and, you know, parking in the parking lot, running their trucks while they're waiting probably to distribute all over the, to hit 93, but it's kind of loud and noisy. I'm just wondering if they, they're allowed to operate.
I don't think they're supposed to start engines before seven.
Yeah, well, at 5:00 AM, they're going like hummingbirds, so.
Do we have, do we have anything on the books for that, Val? I mean, as a construction person, that's usually one of the biggest complaints. People have their trucks, they try to start the equipment up early. So no starting up before seven usually.
So, Rondi, can I ask, um, so is it in front of the RMV? Where, where exactly?
Behind the RMV. It's all connected to the RMV. It's a channel building.
Okay, so. Okay, so behind there, but it's not on Waltham Street on, in those other buildings?
No.
It's, okay.
It's right between Richdale and the Dunkys and the back of, uh, the RMD area. So a whole bunch of loading docks. There must be 15 or 20, um, loading dock doors. I haven't gone around the whole building because I'm like, I just gotta get out of here.
So I'm not sure what, what they're doing over there, but, um, we can definitely, I can convey that to the, to the building inspector. Um, so it's not construction, it's just trucks running early.
That are loading ice cream and, you know, various other goods. The trucks are all parked all over. The lights are running, the trucks are running, and there's gotta be at least 20 trucks, if not more. Dog getting in trouble there, Val? Or is this somebody else's animal?
I'm not sure. I don't know. Um. Ouch. I didn't know that they do things with ice cream over there.
Yeah, it's just, it must be a warehouse of some sort.
No neighbors complaining. You should check.
Well, maybe not. They're all sound asleep, I guess. I was wondering, because it just looks like a, you know, lit up. Kind of something like a circus is gonna go on or something. There's that many lights between the trucks in the building.
I was, uh.
I'll let the building inspector know.
Okay.
How are things going at Woben and, um, Lowell Street? Is that moving ahead?
Yes, actually, we have the design public hearing scheduled. It's gonna be, um, I believe it's, it's later this month. It's coming up. Um, so it's not an actual meeting. It's just a, a video that you go online and watch. But, um, it's what they're doing right now for design public hearing. So and the design has been moving ahead. We're gonna be, we're gonna be probably 100% very soon, like early winter. Um, so if, if other projects kind of fall behind with scheduling, we'll be able to take, um, an earlier spot in the construction schedule with the state. So that was always the idea, is to get the design done so that we're ready to go to construction. Yeah. So we're on the tip for 2024, but we could slide into a, a much earlier spot so that that intersection could be reconstructed when we need it for a detour for Route 38. So that would be ideal. Um, so we're gonna shoot for that.
Everybody okay? Rondi, you good?
Yep, I'm great.
Terry, you good?
Good.
Sean, you good?
Excellent.
Angela? Cheryl, you got everything?
Mm-hmm.
Cheryl. Cheryl.
Turned off her camera.
All right, meetings adjourned. Until next month.
Good night.
Next meeting is, uh, what date?
Hey, have a nice Thanksgiving.
December 8th.
December 8th, excellent.
See you then.
Bye-bye.
All right, bye.
Bye.